We'll call the May 15, 2019 Franklin Township Board of Supervisors meeting at 7:00. I think I did that in a while. In attendance are Supervisor Dave Marsh Sider Torres. Also unattended are Solicitor Mark Thompson, Harvard Historical Commission Chairman Paul Lagassi, Township Manager Joan McVoy, Assistant Township Manager Jeff Eastburn, Secretary Sharon Norris, and there are...
Somebody's just walking in.
Two members of the public. We also have Representative from Medic 94, Bob Hodgson. Okay, so we'll ask for the pledge of allegiance.
Okay, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, this announcement, there will be an executive session after tonight's meeting to discuss a legal issue. If there were public comments for anything related to items on tonight's agenda, the public comment is for items not... The last public comment is for items not on the agenda. It's important you state your name clearly for the tape so that the comments may be reflected back if you state whether you're a township resident or a county senator. Since we have such a small group here, we'll take comments in the issue. All right, Nancy, you want to start the first one?
Sure. I make a motion to approve the April 17, 2019 version two meeting minutes presented by the Township Secretary. I second that. Discussion?
I had one correction that I had given to Joan before, it's just a minor thing at the end of the minutes where it's the end of the... Is that anywhere?
The complaint is discussion.
Where it says Vision Partnership Grant. The actual name of the program is Vision Partnership Program.
All right, okay.
Just keep the title right. That's all.
All in here say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
I abstain since I was in here. Is that ready up? Is there anything to do?
You may.
Kind of if you want. Whatever is appropriate, okay. Be known. All right, it's fine for you to abstain.
You have to make that decision on your own.
I abstain since I was in here.
That's what I would do in that case.
Motion carries 4 to 0. I make a motion that the Board of Supervisors adopt Resolution 2019-11 regarding disposition of records for the Board of Supervisors meeting on April 17, 2019.
I'll second that.
Thanks, David. And just allow us to erase the tape once the meeting minutes are put in paper. Aye, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, great.
I make a motion that the board approve the April Treasurers Report, which includes the following dispersments: the general fund with dispersments and transfers of $393,125.18. Parking Recreation Fund with dispersments of $9,688.3. Building Space Fund with dispersments of $6,505.17. The Rigidness and Services Fund with dispersments of $5,910. And the Fire Hybrid Fund with dispersments of $580.80. In the balance in all funds totaling $1,288,342.59. Second? Seconded by Stephanie.
Rich, you put over a million dollars here.
We'll spend it, yeah.
That's committed. It's all committed. Any comments, discussion?
I do have a comment. And it's not, it really is a comment, not really a question. So I noticed in the Treasurers Report that we received a grant from Chester County, which I think is wonderful, for $21,000, $21,604. And I just wanted Joan, if you could just explain to the public and ask what that was for.
That was for the work we did on our dirt and gravel roads that came from the Conservation District. So I just want to commend the office for going after these grants and making sure that we take advantage of what's out there because this was an important project. We also saved us a lot of money. So good job. Thank you.
It was a really good project too because I think we had a discussion around how much we get in liquid fuels and I think it's 5,000 mile and those roads in total are maybe 5,000. So we had a good discussion on well, how much do we want to spend to maintain roads that we don't really get much money for? And so finding the grants was really the way to keep those roads well maintained without using taxpayer money to...
Well, the one, the project we did on Franklin Road, that road was a big erosion problem. Every time we had a heavy rain, we'd have to go back and redo the work over and over again. So by putting in the pipes and the drainage system that they did, when you ride the right one, then you know it's...
It's held steady. And so taxpayer money, maybe we spent, what, 7,000 or... It was a lot less than it was gonna be. Originally it was, it was like tens of thousands of dollars originally, so.
Yes, it was. If we got...
Do you remember the percentage?
I think...
I don't know off the top of my head.
I think we did 25% and they did 75% I think.
But we got the full grant that we applied for both roads. So I agree with Jonathan, that's really important.
Yeah, we've had really good luck with the Conservation District things since that year, so that's just keeping what we have for... Let's see, oh, we did receive a check tonight.
Oh, yes.
We'll just note that.
Okay, okay. We received Mr. Shabriglia's check, was that his?
I'm sorry, what check?
Mr. Shabriglia.
Oh.
It was one of the zoning issues that we had before the House of Representatives. So Mark delivered, hand delivered his check.
That was in some for the calls and these Township had enforcing the zoning.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries 5 up.
Next is the March Zoning Officers' Report. There's no motion required for this. It's simply a announcement. Permits issued 11, building inspections 27, building fees collected were $9,001.14. Recreation, open space and impact fees, $5,290.19. And miscellaneous fees, quite well with that, $3,550. Is there any, anything outstanding in the miscellaneous or just random stuff?
There, that's where it's at, like zoning permits, that type of thing. Because it's not a building permit per se, I guess, isn't that common?
Okay, and there were two zoning issues reported.
3327 Appleton Road, we're still waiting for the judge to make his decision.
Okay.
So that's where that stands. 1620 New London Road, the applicant has submitted a new application to Jeff Vogels, a new zoning application for change of use. And but in the meantime, Jeff has notified him that he has to abide by the current conditional use. So he sent him notice violation, I believe the letter went out yesterday, for him to follow the conditional use until his new zoning is approved.
How long will Jeff take to review that?
Well, he's in a process, they're having their engineer do some drawings for them for stormwater and things of that nature. So Jeff doesn't have everything he needs yet, so they're working on it.
So the notice is a fine or just...
So notice of violation, that he's in violation and if he doesn't stop what he's doing, then Jeff can do a, issue a cease and desist. Correct?
That's correct.
All right.
So that's it.
I guess the only comment I'd say is that these seem to look like income, but they're really...
Yes.
They're really revenue neutral, really collecting costs.
We don't want to make it a profit center.
We're not allowed to.
But it usually ends up negative on us a little bit, so.
We did raise it a couple of years ago, just so it would be less loss.
Less loss, you like that, right?
So that concludes the zoning officers' report.
I don't have much here. The PC did not meet in many, Donna, anything, but I know they didn't meet, so.
Yeah, it's been pretty broad for us.
Okay. Paul?
Mark? H.C. We didn't meet, but I just have a couple things I'd like to bring to the end of the supervisory session. So at the end of April, I know I talked at the last meeting, we were going to get the history website up, or at the end of April, we kind of went live in the sense that we publicized it. So the easiest way for most people to find is probably go to the Township website and look for the history button and just click on that. It'll send you to us and we have maps, distorted maps that are freely downloadable. We have some old postcards up there and some talks and histories and other items that were called, that are the distorted pages that we call from old township newsletters that are now available as essentially sort of history articles. That's what's under the snapshot. And we'll be adding to it as time goes on, but it will depend upon ability to get to it. So they may burst us up and then nothing may happen for a long time, but once things go up, they're widely available. We had a talk in New London last week and that was Cody Shanahan from the New England Ristner, and he talked about the history of New England Ristner. And it was a very interesting talk, very good speaker, the other, very good turnout and took up through that people. And we will be asking him back at some point. And that was one of the talks that we pick up, we split picking up the tab with New London, they'll pick up one, we pick up one, and so that was one we're picking up. And finally, there's going to be a talk in Oxford on Wednesday, May 29. And the topic is On the Home Front: Stories of the American Revolution. And that's at 7:00 P.M. And that's going to be held at the Penns Grove School on the Court, which is a slightly changing location, but this is a talk that's being co-sponsored with the Oxford School of Ristner.
Well, just more curious, is there any update or anything new on the new found hidden cemetery or what the next step might be on that?
At this point, the, really, I just need to be able to give a little time to do some research and just be certain that there's been no D transfer associated with the property. There's no, we have no evidence that there's ever been a D transfer. As such, the cemetery is probably considered abandoned and the responsibility for it, I think I understand a lot of the burden is the Township. But I haven't had time to be up there. I've been running down to DC, my son's on graduation, so. I've been a little selfish, haven't we said?
That's selfish, that's true.
So yeah, so it's been, you know, it's something that's got to be done. It's a matter of sort of diving ass across the seas. But I really don't suspect that we're going to find anything. What's going to happen is I'm going to go in and search on the names of the trustees because there's no transfer that we know of associated with the church itself. There could be a transfer that was done by one of the trustees and so it wouldn't necessarily be obvious. So it's a matter of just trying to build everything. Nancy?
Thank you, Paul.
Nancy, you want to introduce the first item of business?
I'd be happy to introduce Bob Hodgson, we just met. Thank you so much for coming. And there's his hands out here and you're going to give a summary on the New London Ristner, or the Dormenusville Detail Report. Thank you very much.
Thank you for the invitation. This is John Arora, I'm making the rounds in the 18-minute calendar and serve kind of like a boulder stone, just kind of this mic 2019 tour. And the reason is, a couple reasons we're going up to see our municipalities. A, just to update everybody on a specific basis about their municipality and call volume and things like that. And also to say thank you because the municipal funding we get from our 18 municipalities will enable to provide services. A little bit about us, we are in our 36th year of service to the community. We serve 225 square miles, 18 municipalities, population about 75,000 in there, and we do about 3,000 calls a year through the 911 Center. We have a station at the Genesee Hospital and we have a station in Abidale. And basically for the paramedic, you can think of us as the emergency room wheels. When we come to the, on 911 call, our goal is to stabilize the patient at the accident scene or at their house with our paramedics. So we come out in SUVs type vehicles, because the paramedic and their equipment. So we like to get there with our ability, our diagnostic equipment, our medications and IVs and things like that. Our goal is to come out and basically bring the emergency room to the patient. We only exist because of our partner, fire companies with Westboro, Oxford, Abidale, and Christiana Animals up there in the northern part of our district. We don't, we're not able to do what we do without them. They're partners in our patient care. And when you call 911, you always hit ambulance, but only a life for any calls till we go out. So about 50% of 911 calls for medical emergencies, the paramedic is dispatched. For regional service, again, we provide that, that large area that we provide the service to, we have a community-led board directors. Since day one, our companies have always sat, they helped form the med unit back in 1983. So they sit on our board directors, each of them have two seats, and the rest of our board of directors is made up of members from the job community. And Harold Walls from Franklin Township is our chairman this year. So a couple people, I think Carl Mann was our chairman for about 10 years, so we had two. Franklin Township has led our organization for quite a few years. We have three municipal officials on our, on our board. Rich from Lunning Road, we have Jerry from New London.
Jerry Porter, yeah.
Jerry Porter and I'm missing somebody, I'm missing. Radar from Penn Township. And we also have Judge Massey on our board directors. So having that community-based board directors has really been beneficial to us, you know, with the fire companies kind of heading on the operational end, the members of the community really bringing a sense for what we do and the services we provide. A little bit about how we pay for what we do, we do bill for our services. About half of our patients are on Medicare or Medicaid government type programs. And when we bill Medicare or Medicaid, if we're not like plumbers, we don't bill 100 and get 100. For those type of programs, we bill 100 and get 10 and require to write the rest of that off. So that makes a challenging for us that, you know, we're not, not able, half of our patients, about 90% of the, of the ability to bill is unable to, unable for us to kind of get that money. We also have some challenges with some of the billing services, the, some insurances will pay the patient but not pay us. So what happens is, you know, somebody gets a $100 check in the mail and you go, oh, I must have overpaid my insurance. Well, if you're reading the fine print, it says please forward this to this address. And half the people who get money, just it's hard to read those things. I can't even read those things. And there are some people who just keep the money. So that's a little bit of a challenge for us to get that money. We all set that with a fundraiser, we do every Thanksgiving, we do a fundraiser for the community, which helps raise about $1,000 a year, which is very helpful to us. And about a third of our money comes from our municipal funding. We started this about 15 years ago and we started with our 10 to the middle request to all of our municipalities. I'm proud to say that this year, every municipality has participated. Abidale Borough is back on participating, which is great. So 100% of our municipalities participate in that, our funding request, and that's about a third of our funding every year. Last year, we talked with our municipal leaders, we had a little meeting with them, I know John was there, and there was discussion about changing the formula up to the third, third, third formula. And I know I met Dave Conners last week and there's going to be something over the summer about getting everybody together again and looking at that formula. So that's something we promised to do and Dave promised to take leadership on that, so we should have a meeting in July or August to talk about the funding, the third, the third, the third funding.
So can just, what will that change be?
That will change from a 0.1 bill request to everybody to a combination of the percentage of mileage, the percentage of population, and the percentage of call volume averaged out times the number, the amount of money we need. Dave and I usually talk about $400, $5,000 a year if you average that. So that'll recalculate out, so you take the percentage of all three, you average it out. I think it's similar to what Westboro did.
It's the same formula that we developed for Westboro Fire Company's ambulance where we use this 1/3 formula where your cost is allocated on assessed value, your township, your population, and then the number of calls. First two give you some fixed value, which is important because if you don't have a fixed cost in there, then you can't fund it. And the number of calls gives you a little bit of variability, so it helps us out versus Townships that have a whole lot of calls. It took us a long time to have a seven-minute values. We have 18 in this group here, so.
Right, and that's, that's really the challenge I think we had, I think Dave and everybody said, hey, we're going to, we're going to work through it and, you know, we had you to kind of think about it and we're kind of rolled out the proposal to give this summer.
So that would put more, more, Penn would have to pay a little bit more and those that have less of a call would pay a little bit less.
Yes, basically.
It'd be fair. I think, I think you've got, like Oxford's got where Presbyterian, so they, they're a big call volume provider and then Penn Township's got a lot, but Penn Township came along. They were kind of tough for it for a while and eventually came along with the Westboro Fire Companies formula.
And I think with preliminary, looking at the numbers, I think a little bit more than half would go down and about half would go up. And then some would go up just a little bit. Actually, there's two or three towns that just change $100 or so, ironically. There's some that will go up and I think the challenge will be, as you said, with places like Oxford Borough where we run a lot of calls, to one particular location or Penn, we run a lot of calls to one location. In a way, the challenge for them is they're nonprofit organizations, so they're not, they're not getting, getting a generate tax revenue, but they're taxing services by, by the calls there. So that, that third, and third, and third formula, the Westboro formula or Dave's called the Conners formula, we'll be, we're going to discuss that over the summer.
We could probably talk about maybe some kind of phase.
And that was a discussion.
Three or four years or something, so it's not such a shock, so.
Yeah, I think that was a discussion, the three-year phase in was, was one thing. So I think we're, I think, and one of the challenges with, actually one of the good things about that is days of, you know, municipalities would leave, leave the push for this, like that was something that was, something that came out of me last year. So we're looking forward to communicating that to all municipalities here in another couple months and being able to look at that. But again, we don't, we're not able to provide our services without municipal funding, so thank you. I mean, it keeps our services out in the community and, and we've used the model and the participation we have with the municipalities here across the Commonwealth. I was out in Bedford County two months ago talking to their municipalities about how we do funding up here for EMS and the participation. It's just a, it's interesting to travel all the parts of the Commonwealth where the communication to the municipalities is zero. There's, you know, couldn't tell you who the municipalities serve and things like that. So starting that conversation with our municipalities, which we've done through the years and giving that information and being accountable for the public's money and transparent is, is important to us. Your information's there for 2018. Not really any surprise, the call volume, you know, of course during the day gets a little bit busier and then dies down in the middle of the night. And most of your patients are Christian, probably just through your proximity to Christianity.
You see the percentage of transporters in Christianity.
We are based at the hospital, always make sure we have to start, we're based at the hospital, we are not owned by the hospital. We're fortunate to have a great relationship with the hospital, we get our rent up there for a dollar a year, which we have to eat that. And the new owners are very, EMS is health, safety friendly. So that's a really good thing for us, we're able to buy supplies for them at their cost and medications at their cost, which saves the salary for us. So it's great partnership.
So just two comments. One, thank you for your service. It's comforting to know if we need you. It's great to have you. It's shocking to see how many overdoses there are.
Yeah, yes.
I would never expect that to be number two. Number two, 11 overdoses in 2018. This is a small group.
Right. Anecdotally, we were thinking a little earlier this year, we thought things might get a little bit better, but one of the things we track is we track how many times we give Narcan.
Yeah.
And it's up this year. If we extrapolate the numbers, we're going to be up by about 40% over the last year. And the thing to remember is, a lot of times, we're not the ones giving Narcan, the police can give Narcan, the family can give Narcan.
This is just one small...
So that number is a little bit skewed, skewed low, I think. So it's, it's a challenge and we're just kind of, as, as solutions are found somewhere, we're kind of stuck at, we're just kind of bridge to kind of, you know, keep doing what we're doing. I think we're, you know, with Narcan out there, I think it's, it's saving more lives, but again, it doesn't cure the disease, it just, you know, hopefully.
Get you through the night.
Yeah, hopefully you get people the treatment. I think that's what the hospitals are getting really good at, is trying to get people, when they get to the hospital, instead of just saying, make them go home now, is to try to get somebody in there, ready hospital calls of the turkey sandwich plan. They figure if they give somebody a turkey sandwich and a Sprite, they get by 45 minutes to get a counselor in there to talk to them. So they go and said, because there were people ready to leave and they said, hey, you hang out and give you something to eat with people, so I was going to sit here for a turkey, turkey sandwich and Sprite. And then they get a counselor in there. So in a way, doesn't guarantee they'll get into some kind of help, but you know, you're doing something instead of just kind of revolving door.
That was a big improvement because Bob Weedenwaller was pushing that for years to get something, because there were people just getting there of treatment and leaving and they go right back into the same routine and get, they don't get a piece of paper to worry about.
Right.
So yeah, it's good.
We're talking about overdose and I guess the assumption is that it's a illegal substance overdose, but is it, does that also include possible overdoses of a prescribed?
Any type of overdose. And also, if you look in there...
Then there are some of those as well.
Right, and some of your unconscious persons, it doesn't always come in as an overdose. It could be, some of your cardiac arrest could actually be overdoses, some of your other dispatches, so that's just dispatched by nature, which doesn't actually correlate 100% to what it is. It could come in a multitude of things, so some people just don't want to admit that they overdose and they, see, I feel sick. So you get there, you think it's a sick person, do a little bit more music, okay, I feel sick. So it's, it's, you know, again, it's, it's a terrible problem in society, it's not just Franklin Township, it's everywhere. And a lot of people worked really hard on it, but solutions are going to be kind of following from here, but we're doing what we can to, we are doing.
Okay, well certainly, a couple of comments. Medic 94, from my experience, is a first-class organization in every respect. It's done professionally in every, every way you could imagine. The big difference for them is versus the fire company, the fire company transports people, they stabilize it as best they can, but your organization can administer drugs, so your people have some, and lifesaving procedures to extend a person's life before you get them there. And I think the other interesting characteristic about your organization is the longevity of the people you have working for you. They're all long-term people, so we're going to talk a little bit about that. It is always remarkable.
We have one employee that's been here since the first day, who's been here for 36 years. We have other ones that have been there, we have one that unfortunately is probably going to leave on disability here in the next couple of weeks, who's been 31 years. And a lot of these people are from the community. They went to paramedics, they were, were with fire companies here, went to paramedics who all back at St. Joe's up in Nixter when that was around, and then he ran back to the community. So we have a lot of people that are our staff that, you know, have been here a lot of years and, you know, we take, take a lot of pride in taking care of our employees and, you know, education, we always, we get education money, you know, what kind of things can we do? And some of them want to become nurses also, and some of them want to do other things. And, you know, so we, we have a really good retention program with our employees, which is really nice and saves us money on training costs and things like that. And it's, it's a really good group of men and women that work here. And we have two Pennsylvania State Paramedics in the Year on my staff, I have four county paramedics in the Year on my staff. In 2017, we were Paramedic Service of the Year for the Commonwealth. So we're really proud of the recognition we get and, and the really good people that work for us.
What's the status of, I mean, it's no time for a necessary balance sheet, but what's the status of equipment? How old is it? Is it the average life that you expect or is it older?
We go through a vehicle about every, our vehicle lasts eight years is what we try to get eight years out. We're fortunate with a vital state contract, so we're able to do that, so that saves us a lot of money there. And our maintenance program, we take really good care of it, so our, and our vehicles are all kept inside, which when they're not on calls, so that helps a lot. So we're able to get eight years out of them. Our challenge probably in the next 24 months is our cardiac monitors. That's the most valuable piece of equipment we carry and it's about, they're about $40,000 a piece. And they're getting old and we're going to have to replace four of them probably in the next two years. And we're, we're fortunate that we're in line for possibly getting grants from the feds. The AFG grants that the fire companies gotten before by trucks and gear and things like that, they've opened up the criteria for that to where we can apply for it. So we're not going, we got turned out last year, we're really hoping, and they would pay 90% of it, which would be... They've opened up the criteria for that to where we can apply for it. So we're not going, we got turned out last year, we're, we're really hoping, and they would pay ninety percent of it, which would be great. Um, and Plan B, we talked about the hospital, maybe partnering with them in some way, but that's, that's our big piece of equipment that we have. It's, it's the vehicles and those cardiac monitors are the most expensive things we have. Our vehicles, we get, get them for about fifty thousand start to finish by kind of.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're supportive. Thank you. And uh, we'll, we'll look forward to talking to everybody here over the summer. So thank you.
Very much.
Thank you, Rob.
Good evening. Is the road program next, Joan?
Yeah, you want to start it?
Everybody read the motion or we talk about it first?
We read the motion and then we can explain. Um, but I think the roads that we, we talked about are in the motion, so um, we can try to read the motion and have a discussion.
Okay, so I make a motion with the board supervisors, authorized and captured manager to move forward with implementing the two thousand nineteen road program with the following roads. Walker Road, South Girls' Road lower, South Roads, you wrote it upper, East Hill Road, with the possibility Churchill Road of funding becomes available. Now, second to that?
Second.
Signed by Nancy. Okay, let's have some discussion. So I think Joan, you put out some.
This is fabulous.
Yeah, this, the sheet, the layout of the thing is.
Yeah, the one she had today is the right one.
I, I emailed.
There it is, right here.
And I, and I put a copy on your desk too.
Well, there's a, there's one you selected. This is the program you selected.
Well, that's the one we talked about at, at the, at the meeting and.
And this other one had four options.
Uh, other options, yes. But this one, if you recall, uh, when we were talking about it, uh, the fact Gary suggested that if we're gonna do South Girls' Road upper, we should do both sections.
Right.
While we're there instead of localizing another year. So that's why they're included there. Um, and with a little bit of impact money that we use for that. And then the Peace Dale Road uh, project with some impact money to offset that. And then that leaves us with approximately forty thousand dollars that we could apply towards Churchill. Now, lots of times when, with Jim's estimates, we, we found that sometimes he's, he, the estimates are over and, and you know, we make out and we do have some extra money. I mean, you never know what you're gonna run into when you peel the, the black top off a road. So if everything goes okay, you know, we could end up with enough money to, to finish Churchill. And if, if not, um, the uh, I, I'd hate to take forty-eight thousand dollars out of the general fund.
No, no. We were, we were gonna do that unless we got, really toward the end of the year and we had some, some excess money in the general fund and.
Right.
But this early in the year, you don't wanna take that commitment.
But we did talk about the meeting taking some of from the guide grills.
Well, that was for, you wanted to do that for Lime Scarping. Oh, okay. That's on the other column.
Yeah, yeah, right, you're right, right.
So the proposal is a combination of either one or three depending upon.
Well, really, it's, it's those two sort of together. So that's it. Do you have this one? You should have it.
It's a simple one here.
So Joan, he's saying that as the year goes on, we're not necessarily committing to have a balanced shortfall. We're gonna see how things play out.
Right, if, if you say we definitely want to do Churchill right now, the way this looks, we're gonna have a shortfall, but if we make that the, the last project and we can see how everything falls, right.
Okay, I agree with that.
And see how that goes.
So this does not include the possibility of Jim finding maybe being a little bit over budget and which, and also may allow us, if we decide, we kind of talked about a little bit, um, putting, instead of putting forty-five, we put in fifteen into the reserve.
Right.
Well, that's, yeah, so again, again, we can wait. You know, these, these first three projects up here, um, we'll enter those into the, the uh, liquid fuel project with the state. So those, those will all be done. And then the other, the other two, we can work on as, as the money's available.
Okay, and we did cost control weekly in the staff meeting, so this thing's not a, you know, we'll see how this thing goes as the year goes along on a weekly basis, so.
But I think it's good that Stefan brought out that we did talk about looking at the uh, Missouri Fund and also look back the MS four funds. But that, I mean, it all depends. We just keep watching it and then we'll come back and look in the maybe places where we can get money for Churchill.
You know, one thing I thought of, just on a real quick side note, I thought was interesting, um, this is thirteen years of data.
Yeah, that was pretty good.
And if you take the six point four million dollars, I mean, it's easy to eyeball or do it in your head.
For you, for you, Stefan.
Comes out to just short of five hundred thousand dollars a year for thirteen years.
Yeah, that's pretty much what we do, about half a million a year.
Yeah, I always got the impression over the last, say, six years that we really beefed up or spiked up the spending, but.
Um, it goes up and down and um, it depends on how much we put into winter, winter road maintenance. We've had, we've had a hundred thousand dollar surplus in winter road this year.
Yeah.
Uh, but we've.
The two years.
But we've been in a hole a lot too.
Yeah, for two thousand fourteen, I didn't realize that. We spent nothing on road maintenance because we had to do the salt shed.
We bought, built the salt shed.
Here's what happened there, just a little bit of history. We had about, we had a half a million available for uh, the road program, but we realized we needed to build this salt building. So we allocated a quarter million, two hundred fifty thousand. We eventually got it for two hundred and thirty thousand. But the PC gave us a tough, such a tough time getting that building approved that by the time we got the building approved, we couldn't do the road program. So that money carried, that money carried over into the next year.
It's not like we needed it, it was all timing.
We just couldn't do it. I mean, we didn't, we got that building built, but ready to use in about the end of November.
Right, I mean, it was like it's done, it's getting filled the next day. It was, it was tight.
It didn't allow us, and we were uncomfortable, um, starting the road program without those costs fully under control. So that's really what happened in that, that particular year. We only had ten and a quarter million dollars on the road program, most of it carried over into uh, following year. And that's when we did uh, all that trainees work on Peace Dale Road. All those inlet boxes and that big pipe. So I'm gonna feed a big pipe. So that, that's, that's what, that was that bump in the program.
So you're right, Stefan. In two thousand six, we spent seven hundred thousand, which is interesting. So we haven't necessarily spent a lot more, we maybe spent differently. Now, why does the liquid fuel change so much?
Um, well, they, when they passed the, that recent legislation and raised the gas prices, then we got a big bump up, um, on liquid fuels.
That, that's with the current amounts that we're getting, that, you know, there is an increase every year, but the balance, if you're looking at the balances on the sheet, Nancy.
Yeah.
The balance for two thousand six means that we had money left over from the previous year. So we.
Oh, liquid fuel money. So that isn't what you got that year.
No, that's, that's what, that is what was available.
Oh, okay. I was, I was, you were Nancy, that's what, what we came in, okay.
Now, since, now, two thousand seven, it was probably, that's close to what we got. Two thousand eight, two thousand nine, but then when we did two thousand ten, um, it's not the year here that we had to give the money back. That's why there was more money in that, I think.
I think you're right.
Yes.
Okay, so, um, it's really helpful to see this.
The other characteristic in two thousand six, um, real estate taxes was three point one mils and now we're at two point four.
So we have less money.
Yeah, less money. And that, and that came in the day in fifteen, fourteen and fifteen.
And, and two thousand six was also the first year of the EIT tax.
Right. So Jeff, did anything surprise you when you went through this and saw the roads we'd gone and?
Anything that made you think, gosh, that road's a real pain in the neck or?
So keep on going there, or.
I think, my feeling is the past couple of years, we've done a much better job with the contractor we have. Because we're, we're able to take a more careful look at things versus the way we bid it out before because the contractors just seemed to be wanting to race through things and we happened to hold onto them to try and make sure everything was done right. But Jim's very conscientious for the work that he does and he wants to, he wants to do things right. And if he's got a problem, he'll call the office and we'll investigate it. And then we be able to talk about it with Joan and then out of staff leaving.
We, we deal with it. We, it doesn't get paid over.
Right, right.
Yeah, the, there was a change in philosophies in two thousand fourteen. If you go back to, it's two thousand and seven when the first ten-year road program was started with McCormick Taylor.
That's when they did the evaluation.
And they, and supervisors then, it was the right decision to have McCormick Taylor do it, an evaluation of all of it. Overall, they were in a little poor condition, really poor. You know, surface condition was in bad shape. So the ten-year road program prioritized those roads. And essentially, we milled and overlaid those roads. They didn't do any, they didn't affect any underlying uh, causes of failure, the drainage or base conditions. And it was the right thing to do because you had to bring the overall surface condition up. So two thousand fourteen, and we're also using all the large road contractors to a decent job, can't get them to finish any details. It's just, once they go, they go. So then we engaged Jim Derazio in some unit price contracts, did unit price contracts. And he was able to um, bring paving into his capability uh, through Lenn Mullbaying. And at that point, we decided that we would work at a slower pace, fewer miles per year, but we would uh, correct all of the underlying causes of failure, which would be base conditions, uh, drainage, cross pipes, roadside hardening. All those issues were put into the road. The idea was that when we're done with that, we're done with it for quite a while. So a big change in the procedure started in two thousand fourteen. So the worry then was, are we uh, are we going fast enough that, you know, things are not gonna blow up in the middle of winter? And we had that happen two thousand twelve, I think it was, first year I was on the board, Peace Dale Road came apart, an enormous section of road peeled up in the middle of the winter and we could not do anything about it. People just had to drive on it. It was just an awful mess. So um, that was kind of a reminder of what we needed to avoid. So far, um, I think we're fixing the roads faster than they're degrading. You gotta do that. That's the basic concept. If you're not doing it faster than they're degrading, then you're not advancing the overall condition. If you're doing it slower, then things are just gonna degrade. So it's not really easy to measure, but one of the measurements we use is um, at the end of winter, we do a thorough inspection of the roads and identify the conditions. For the previous two years, we didn't have anything come apart after winter. But um, this year, unfortunately, we had six locations where we had um, the roads come apart on us. So that's a bit of a concern. So we're gonna look at those to see whether, and we've had to patch it for a while.
The water, the water.
We, we didn't have any, we did get a lot of extra water, but um, I think we patched. Patchwork, uh, it was Ways Run, Kimball Lot, Parsons Road, Gypsy Hill and Elbow were thirteen thousand, two hundred forty-eight dollars in total patchwork. And we don't like patchwork because it costs us the most per square foot and you eventually have to grind it up when you fix the road. So it's just money you're putting into the road. It's expensive. Uh, but in this case, we had, we had no choice but to check those roads. I know the one on Ways Run came apart down to the bottom of the hill. And uh, we need to look at that one because I'm suspicious of the base conditions there. Did have a conversation with uh, Dr. Lawrence and uh, he was there when they built that section of Ways Run and that development. Um, I think they built it down to ten, to address ten and then went bankrupt, the Bennett's. And then later on, the project picked up. And the um, comments I got from John, uh, were not particularly good about the way that road was laid down, believe it to the amount of base condition that are in there. So I'm gonna ask Jeff and Jim to reach out to John.
Sure.
Get his comments directly. I think we might probably consider some coring that road to see what the base condition is, so. Um, the others, we haven't really looked at them in any detail, but uh, we need to look at all those and find out what caused those failures, whether they're systemic or are they just some localized anomaly? Don't know.
One road that surprises me maybe because it's longer is Churchill Road. They spent three hundred thousand in two thousand sixteen, we spent twenty, we spent money every year on it, just about. And yet, we still have to look at maybe.
Well, you'll look at pieces of it because uh, we did, there was one piece that was really bad for a long time. It was up through Wyndham here. And we didn't fix that because they were building Wyndham more near and they still had, you know, heavy trucks and that, trucks and excavation equipment. So when we finally did do that road, that was a major reconstruction. Essentially, that road was taken down to dirt. Um, the road was widened, trees were removed, property owners are extremely cooperative, let us look and take some trees out. Um, and I can tell you that road, that section of road is done, done. That one.
It's beautiful.
It's thorough. We did, the same thing happened on Connor Mill Road. We did that one down with dirt. So um, the reconstruction varies from just a straight and non-overlay to uh, all the way down to rebuild a whole other way. Rebuild is uh, typical road destruction is ten and a half inches of number three stone, that's about that, about that big. And then um, four and a half inches of coarse asphalt with nineteen millimeter stones, about three-quarter of an inch. And then the top coats an inch and a half wear coat with eight millimeter stones that are just a little over quarter inch diameter. So you look at a brand new road reconstructed as about fifteen, sixteen inches thick. In many cases, we've done some base evaluations and essentially found astral on the dirt, so.
Now, the stuff we've done.
So the stuff we've done since two thousand fourteen is real quality stuff, so.
Well, we've picked up a few problems we've had with Brothers Riving and.
Well, that one, that one we don't know. That was a new process.
Fifteen.
We, we didn't get the best response out of the contractors there though.
That was a gem.
And how that's gonna play out over time, I don't know. I don't know. That was unfortunate. Okay, so.
So have a point, you're right.
I'm just looking at our key pursuits, paving, re, road reconstruction, drainage improvement, inlet box maintenance, pipe replacement, shoulder hardening, road guarding where possible, road striking and guide grills. There's the, there's the key items that we're looking to do along all of our road work. We really talked about the policies, we don't need to do that again. So I think that's where we are. The one that Jones got laid out is, is the path, but um, all kinds of things can move you, can change your mind.
A little bit flexible.
Um, weather last year, all that wet weather really got us to the point that we were not even able to finish Walker Road. We did all the prep work on Walker Road, widening and all. But got too cold and too wet in November, we could not finish it. So hopefully we get better weather this year. We usually don't start this until uh, school buses stop. Last year, we were bothering school buses in October, September and October, unfortunately.
Yeah, we had to stop by November fifteenth for Penn Dot to allow us to pave anything after that.
So I believe there's a motion on the floor.
Yes.
So um, any, any additional discussion?
Uh, I think so. Nancy said.
Any, any more discussion? So um, all favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any against? No? Okay, great. Box your vote. Excellent. It's a lot of good work. Jeff, thanks for, for putting this together for us.
This, this was the best evaluation we've had in all the years that I've been here. Very clear what we needed to do, so.
I'll keep my fingers crossed, I'll leave a line for Churchill.
I can tell how that works out. I'm looking for my agenda and I lost it here for someone. Thank you.
And thanks for this. This is, like you said, I think it's fantastic. It's just fantastic. It's just something to be proud of, just to look at what's, what's been accomplished over the years and um, just keep your money tally. And, and look, as you say, go back and look and see what was a road, people coming up and why is that why?
Okay, so what have you found? There's a heater discussion?
Yes, heaters.
Just a quick summary, we have um, so first we gotta decide whether to replace the whole heater or, or just a heater or heating and air, right? Well, let me just explain the system we have. And then we have a heating and cooling system. The cooling system's standard um, air conditioning system has got an, it's got a cooling coil and a plenum upstairs and a condensing unit outside. That system operates completely independently from the heating system. A coil and a piece of ductwork. A coil and a piece of ductwork. The heating system is propane fed. It's a heating unit that's also in the same ductwork. There's a fan on one end, the heater, then the air conditioning coil, and then distribution ductwork for distribution air. And then the return air comes into the suction side of the fan. So that's all upstairs.
Sealing, okay.
That's all upstairs. So the heater has failed. The heat exchanger that heats the air has failed because it's a non-contact system where you have combustion products of combustion from the propane flame on one side of the heat exchanger. And then the inside air that is heated in here passes over the other. So it's a non-contact thing where the combustion products go through the heat exchanger and out the flue. But in this case, the heat exchanger has a fault where we're getting products of combustion into the inside air. So I set up some CO and CO2 monitors in here. I use in my barn because I have fire heaters in there. So these are accurate CO2 monitors, and they indicated an elevated level of CO2 in here. So we ran those over a weekend, and then Joan and Jeff rigged them up so they were close to the ductwork so they got more concentrated air, and the levels went up, what, a thousand, over a thousand? Normal background is four hundred fifty ppm CO2. So the HVAC guy came in and said it was leaking, and we confirmed it. So heater's definitely bad, it needs to be replaced. So Joan went out and got all these quotes, and that's up for discussion.
So are we discussing, we're not making a decision, but we're just educating?
Well, we may make a decision, but there's a couple of questions came up today that may lead us to get more information. One is on a heater. The heater we wanted to use was a condensing heater, which is ninety-six percent efficient versus a non-condensing you have right now is only eighty percent efficient. So the technical issue that came up today, that Donna and I, is that the condensing unit may freeze in the weather because it produces atmospheric condensate by condensing the moisture that's in the product of combustion. That's the big energy savings, so. So in reality, we can't put that kind of heat, we don't think we can put that kind of unit in the attic because it operates under freezing conditions. But I'm sure I'd give up on it yet because there may be some techniques to protect that unit from, from the freeze.
We should have that problem at home. And what he ended up doing was wrapping a lot of piping.
He got it.
And it works.
Heat trace tape.
Heat trace tape, yep.
So that needs to be looked at. Because if we go with the non-condensing unit, which is pricey for prices here. Talk about heater only for right now.
It's six thousand for the non.
The one from.
Somers and Zins. Oh, you mean, it's actually a more expensive one, so at least efficient.
Let me see where that.
It's a.
No, I got it right here. I just got too many pieces.
The Lennox? Well, I was.
The Rock saying is to want to, didn't want to put it in the attic at all, right?
I was about somewhere in the Zins.
No, they didn't say that they would put it in the attic.
They said.
You got your stock there?
I think it was Morano that talked about getting it, would have to be.
If we would go with the condensing, and Morano's the guy, right? He's five thousand, one ninety-five.
And he's cheap, right?
But then if you went with a, a non-condensing, I guess Shaker and Gas has got this Lennox signature heater for forty-eight ninety-five.
What's the difference in, in monthly? I assume that the manager, if you're going with the ninety-six versus the eighties, that it's more efficient, you're going to get a higher, a lower.
Lower fuel cost, yeah.
But.
I didn't do a payout, we probably ought to do that. It should be five years on an air key.
Because when I got my request earlier this year, I got a Lennox. And I originally thought I was going to get a David Lennox, a series, which is a twenty series thing. And the guy says, it doesn't make sense to spend that much money. It'll cost you an extra four thousand, three, four thousand dollars to get the, the twenty series thing, and you might save, one is fifty-five percent efficient, the other one is sixty-two. You might save a couple hundred bucks a month. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. So that's my question is, is why necessarily go after the highest efficiency thing when we can save two thousand dollars?
You may be right. We probably ought to do the payback calculation on both of these because generally, an energy project that I've been involved in, five years is the payback.
Yeah. And a lot of these, from my experience having to, having to go through this, it's been twelve years payback. One of my friends owns a HVAC company in Middletown, Delaware, and he was frantic. He's like, it doesn't make sense right now to spend the extra money on a pipe twenty series. The only way you could maybe do it that makes sense is if there's enough rebates from Penn, what do you call it?
Pico.
Pico, right, yeah. If there's Pico rebates or solid every.
How many, with Lennox, it gets to be nine thousand dollars, doesn't it? And so it's not really, it's forty, forty-eight, but then he wants to upgrade zone system.
No, we don't, that's another, that's a, that's a different scope. He wants to upgrade the control system and dampener.
Does he think we need to? I mean, I'm just.
Look, they're always trying to sell you something.
This is your expertise, but you don't have to do it.
You don't, you don't even need to buy a service contractor, probably.
Yeah, you, you probably don't have to buy a service contractor.
But, yeah, he's just trying to sell you more stuff. These guys are, are salespeople, and they always want to sell you something that's more expensive. And I think Stefan's right, we probably ought to look at the energy paybacks on, on the heaters for sure.
And what's the difference between a Lennox signature that's forty-eight hundred, forty-eight hundred dollars and one that's the Lennox signature that's fifteen thousand?
I didn't.
Oh, it's.
Well, the four thousand dollar one, or forty-eight hundred dollars is eighty percent efficient. I know it's two.
So is this one here. But he's got an air conditioner in there. See it?
Oh, yeah.
It's the fact, the fact that air conditioner's part of it, okay. Oh, I see, so it's like a combination, okay.
This is, this one here, the top line here, at forty-eight ninety-five is comparable to Morano's up here.
Okay. But this is less efficient, but like you said, Stefan has to look and see what the difference is.
We could do the, do the payback counts because we're not, we don't need heating right now.
Is Lennox better than, I don't know, two days ago it was freezing. Is Lennox better than York?
Yes, it's the way, the way I would rank it, I would comment a different opinion. Lennox, all their parts are made in the United States.
Okay.
Carrier and train, some of their parts in Mexico. So when the whole Trump thing was saying, oh, we're going to bring the carrier jobs, that, that lasted about six months. They all, a lot of it went back to Mexico.
Okay.
I have a York, I have half a York.
Or shoot your hands.
Well, as soon as that one goes, it's going to.
I got it, I got it.
Uh, York is, probably was a good name maybe, you know, thirty years ago, but it's not quite as, as good as it used to be.
Okay.
Keep in mind, one thing important, and I've heard this from a few people, it's not just the equipment, it's how it's installed. The guy who installed my equipment did not do the right ductwork. The guy I hired to do it, they're not the cheapest, they're not the most expensive with Sobeys King. They came in, they spent hours redoing the ductwork by the air handler in the basement.
We're not planning any ductwork repairs. We're just going to plug in the new units into the air handler.
The air handler, vision is sealing?
Yeah, it's, it's like a, it's like a piece of ductwork. It's got a fan in one end, and it's got the heater section, and then it's got the air conditioning coil.
But it's all in the attic?
It's all in the attic, yeah. The only thing that's outside is the condensing unit for the air conditioning.
Right. I'm from the heating and air conditioning business. My family business was in the business. Was in it for many years. I've installed Lennox units, I've installed Carrier, never installed a York. But I'm sure they've changed drastically over the last twenty years. The biggest thing I will add to all your discussion is having the unit on the first floor as opposed to up in the attic does a lot for you. And it may not be as black and white as, you know, this is how many BTUs you're saving, but the unit itself will be so much better protected and less likely to fail and less likely to rust and, and easier to service and no chance of having any water in a frozen space above or heat, you know, or lose heat from the unit itself. So I wouldn't change the, I don't have really looked at the ductwork, but I doubt the ductwork needs any changes other than connecting to it. But I would recommend having the unit, if there's any possible way, at, at the floor level as opposed to up in the ceiling.
We don't have any place to put it.
Well, you have to find a place.
Not on the other side of that wall?
That, there's no heat out there. That room gets, that's our freezer out there.
They can't put a wall around it?
David, you would end up essentially scrapping the entire supply and return ductwork system. I mean, the unit sits right up there, and everything is piped to it, so.
It's right above us here.
Just above us here, right here. So you can see the, so you would essentially abandon the entire, almost the entire distribution network. That would be an enormous cost, I think.
Okay.
What's the, what's the average moisture if you're going to build for a month? I mean, it's not that much.
Space is going to be that much, yeah.
Um, well, for gas.
Okay, how much do we spend in a winter then? However you want to think about it.
See, I just paid the bill.
We're not going to be able to do this conversation.
Okay, yeah, so yeah, that's a good question, Stefan.
Probably get our, have our tank filled twice, and it's about six or seven hundred dollars. It's not too much money.
So twelve hundred, roughly twelve hundred dollars for an entire winter? So it's two hundred bucks a month? Do we, do we go out there with a Cadillac version of the system when it's only this small, there is a base?
I don't think we need the best of the best.
Yeah, in December of eighteen, we filled up the tank for five hundred and five dollars, five hundred and six dollars, and then we just filled it up in, in February for six hundred and forty-three. So we'll be done again until the fall.
All right, so I think there are two go-tos here. One is we want to do the payback calculations, and then we want to determine how we freeze protect in high-efficiency unit. And Nancy's got some experience. That's what I did a quick check today on the internet, that's what I saw. You have to heat tape and insulate the condensate line.
We got it.
So that may be the answer, but let's just put this thing off for a day until we redo that. The air conditioning unit is functioning right now.
Well, we haven't wanted, we haven't needed it yet.
We haven't needed it, haven't we?
We haven't used it yet, but, I mean, you look at the unit, it's an older unit, but it's in decent condition. There's no external corrosion on it. The proposal that I would make for that is, is replace two of the major, two of the minor components, which are typical failure units, the condensing units, the starting capacitor, and the starting relay. Replace those parts, and then you would probably get a lot more service out of it.
Is it still the old R twenty-two coil?
No, it's twenty-two, yeah.
Okay, that's old, old.
That's right, but you can operate that equipment legally as long as you want to. The only thing you can't do is you can't service the refrigeration side. You can replace all the other components. You can't put more, more R twenty-two in it. So if it leaks, then it's done. But that's not the typical failure. The typical failure is in these two components I talked about.
Yeah, I, I should say this, but I've had a leak on an R twenty-two, and we were able to put some in there.
They, they.
And it's outrageously expensive.
I don't think that they can do it now, but.
They don't advertise it, but they can.
It's like, yeah, two hundred and fifty dollars on a little thing.
I, I, I had the same thing as you just stepped in, and they said the other, so I can do this once, never, never again.
But I think the air conditioning unit, if we can upgrade those components, the way that I would propose we might do that is obtain the parts ourselves because the guys want, it's a forty-five dollar relay, and they want four hundred bucks for the job. So if we buy the parts, buy the relay and the starting capacitor, which is about fifteen, sixteen dollar rate, we get the guy in here doing the heating unit, ask him for a price to put those two components in, see what happens there. That, that way you get, I've got a heat pump in my house I put in in two thousand and two myself, and it runs continuously. It's not like an air conditioner, it runs four months a year. This thing's running continuously. The only components I've replaced are the starting capacitor and the, and the starting relay. So the refrigeration.
Pretty good, nine years?
Never leaks. Never leaks. So, all right, so let's just follow those two go-do ideas on the heater. And we'll bring this thing up at the appropriate time. We're not heating now, we don't need to.
So we don't, yeah, we don't need to do it today, but soon. I'm sure the contractor will want some time.
I'm going to ask Joan to do some things, so we'll ask her. And those energy calculations, I think, I'll do those on business on a few things. All right.
MS four?
MS four. What's the, this is.
We had no comments, no questions. I'm shocked.
We were expecting to have some public comment on MS four. And so, haven't heard, I don't think anyone.
Nobody knows what it is.
We beat this thing to death, I'm not really ready to spend a whole more time on it. I did run into Ellen today in Westchester. She asked me, she was out doing some walking around the building, and she asked me what I thought about it. And I said, well, the, the trees are probably the best solution. It's the cheapest, easiest, easiest to maintain if they accept it. It's the best way to go. I think the stream restoration would give you a better, would give you an improvement in particulates into the creeps, but they're, they're fragile. One hundred years' mark, you can wipe out the whole job, so.
Which is likely right now.
Yeah.
And you have to have the area to do it, too.
And you have to, people willing, right? You have to.
And we get some money from the other lady, you have to get her name off here.
Shane Shane.
Yeah, from the Karen Shane.
And so I think that's the way to go. I guess the only kind of thing hanging out there is whether they're going to accept the farmland exemption. We're not the only one that did that incidentally, most everybody did that, so.
But we have no control, without just the.
No, it's going to go back and do more.
All right, so. Any public comment on MS four? Carry none? Okay, so we're down to public comment.
Yes?
Dan?
Dan Salatera, not Austin, Oklahoma. So I was hoping to make it to the last meeting last month. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to join the meeting. I did watch the video on the website, and unfortunately, I wasn't able to make it for the zoning officer report. This time around, I don't know what was discussed, but when the zoning officer report came up last time, the issue at sixteen twenty-one was raised. And from the sound of it, it sounds like the plan is to allow them to go back to a single use. And, and that would be a resolution to this issue, but I disagree with, with that assessment. I, I don't see how, if you go back to a single use, nothing has changed. The use that they're intending to use it for was, I mean, I think that it's conceded that they needed a conditional use to park trucks back there. Truck parking is a conditional use in the special use district. Again, nothing is changing there. The only thing that they're trying to do, they have two conditional uses on the property. One conditional use is for two uses, and the second conditional use is for truck park. So they were granting those under certain conditions, which they have not lived up to since the time that they received those conditions. And I just, I, so I don't, I don't agree that it would be resolved at that point. I, you know, I'm, obviously, I have to see what my options are, but I don't know that a decision has been formally made yet. I don't know exactly, you know, where, where we are at. Last time I had to reach out to Jeff, he said that a decision was not formally made or anything yet, but it did sound like he did make a decision that the trucks are now, are now going to be considered equipment, utility equipment as opposed to trucks. And so my issue is that, you know, I feel like it was already conceded that a conditional use was required since they went through the whole process of getting it to conditional use for truck parking. They have not lived up to those conditions. They came here, you know, in front of everybody. I came down here, I, you know, almost missed that meeting as well, but I made sure to get here just because I wanted to get it on the record again, make sure that it was clear that there was. Make sure that it was clear that there was a time window of seven a.m. to eight p.m. And, you know, ever, ever since they, they were granted that, they've been showing up with the trucks, you know, at all times of the night and, and, and morning. So, so, you know, I, I disagree with the assessment that somehow now you got a guy who shows up here and says that he's going to abide by a certain set of conditions in order to get the use. He gets the use, never abides by the conditions. Now he says, we're going to go back to a single use, and now all of a sudden, this use is mine, right? Nothing's changed since the condition. And I just, I just don't see that as proper, you know, and I'm, I'm trying to get to a resolution on this issue, but, you know, unfortunately, this one doesn't, doesn't seem to work out for me. There's other issues with the property and what's been discussed. I think we'll address those issues, buffering, and drainage issue, which is actually affecting the back neighbor more than me, but it is affecting me, too. But, you know, that's not gonna change. The trucks showing up early in the morning, putting on the backup siren, revving the engines, all that kind of stuff. They woke me up this morning. I mean, I was sending another complaint this morning, but I knew, you know, I knew that the meeting was today, so I'm gonna come down and make a comment about it. You know, it's very frustrating. I have four kids in the house. When they show up at eleven o'clock, twelve o'clock at night, the kids wake up. And I get woken up at sometimes three, four, five o'clock in the morning, six o'clock in the morning a lot, and, and, and so, you know, I think the whole source of the complaints have been the trucks from the start. And that's never changed. That's, that's, at least that's all that I've complained about to this point, has been some form of truck. At one point, it was dumpster. That issue's been resolved, but, but the other trucks being there. And, you know, it, it, it came off, you know, kind of stepping back and looking at the progression of this whole issue. It, it came off as real dishonest. You know, I feel like you guys were fooled, too, on this one. You know, I, I don't think that they have lived up to that side of it the whole time, and unfortunately, I think that, I know that, you know, this issue's coming up a lot, probably more than any one of us wants to have to deal with it. But, you know, I just, I sit back and I look at it, and it's like the, the neighbor, he just seems to be able to kind of get away with whatever he wants, and I kind of feel like, you know, he's at an advantage because, from my understanding, he's a lawyer. So, you know, I'm disadvantaged there. It takes me a lot more time to look this stuff up and to do my diligence on my own. And, and so, you know, I wanted to come out here and put, put that on the record, you know, that's kind of how I see it. Obviously, you know, I have to figure out, if that decision does go through, I have to figure out what my options are. I totally intend to talk to the neighbors about it and, and find out how they feel as well. I know that, you know, they haven't been reaching out with as much complaints. But when you look at where the larger trucks are parked on that property, they're, they're right up against the property line. My house is right there. You know, when you look at the proximity of, you know, where those folks sleep compared to where the trucks are parked, I can understand that they probably don't hear it as much. But for me, it's, it's right out my window, and it's right out my kid's window, too, two of my kids. So, you know, I think the fact that the trucks are the issue, you know, what, what's really coming from that is they have a conditional use. This is a special use district. There's five properties in that area. All five properties have a residential use, you know, on their property. Four out of the five properties have single-use residential. That's all that they are. I mean, you know, I, obviously, I would love to know, you know, what are the, what are the prospects of having its own residential? And I'd love to hear, you know, if there's anything I could do to propose that or formally, or what the steps would be to look at that, but, you know, that would be, that would be one resolution, obviously, you know, see where that takes me, but, you know, I'm trying to figure out honestly what my options are.
Mark, are you gonna, Mark's our lawyer, so just.
Obviously, the zoning officer's been looking at a changing situation. The applicant doesn't have a formal proposal as to what's exactly the use, this new use that's being proposed, so I don't believe a determination has been made as to whether or not it would be something other than truck parking, which was what the original conditional use was issued for. I can just tell you that this is something that the zoning officer's been looking at very carefully and continues to look at depending on, you know, what the applicant intends to do, and we don't have anything formal. I don't believe a formal decision has been made or determination, the zoning officer. So he's continuing to look at the issues related to the, not only the original conditional use, but the new, this new use that ostensibly is being proposed. We haven't seen exactly what it is, but the applicant has discussed it with the zoning officer, and he's issued a letter that basically said if you want to change the use, then certain requirements you have to go through by development, things of that nature. So I think that's probably all we can say right now.
I think Joan gave us an update at the, I mean, Danny weren't able to make it to the meeting, but Joan, maybe you want to repeat what you said earlier in the meeting so Danny can hear it?
Jeff Bogels has issued a letter of violation because they are not following the current conditional use.
So that was the other issue, because there were correspondence over the last several months concerning his compliance with that conditional use, whether or not the trucks actually were trucks that required commercial driver's license or not was the issue. The township came out, said originally, you said you were only, you parked the C D L trucks there. We understand now that they're non-C D L trucks, and you can modify the conditional use for that. So that has not taken place yet, and he has issued a letter to the property owner. So the property owner does take certain actions. He can cease and desist, or he can modify the use. So it's kind of up in the air right now, but certainly the township is very interested in the zoning officer enforcing the zoning ordinance and the original conditional use conditions. It's not an easy process to do. Enforcing a zoning ordinance is very cumbersome, and it's long, it's expensive, and. We've been looking at this for quite some time.
Yeah. I know that the trucks are a big issue. Is, is there progress being made on the buffering and the drainage? Do we know?
He, he currently is working with an engineer on a stormwater plan for the drainage, and, and he's aware that buffering needs to be completed.
So those are also issues that are subject of violation notice?
Hmm.
I think the best thing you can do is just to let the township just to, you know, continue to do what you've been doing.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not going anywhere, so my bedroom's not changing anytime soon, so I don't think the problems go away, you know, as long as they keep on parking there and start firing those trucks up so early. So I guess to my question, are there thoughts on, are there any limitations or barriers to having it zone as a residential area, or are the barriers on that very high?
Well, it's been a special use district before this board was, was in place. I mean, the board does have permission to modify it, but we have this district that's been designated for these industrial types of uses, and, you know, we were not responsible for designating this area, but it is the area that is designated in addition to another area. We have to constantly update our ordinance and plans, so, you know, that's something that the township probably will be looking at at some time in the future, but if an applicant has a use that's permitted in that zoning district, then, you know, we have to look at whether or not that used to be grandfathered moving forward. That's, that's basically the best we can do at this point.
By P A law, we have to allow when the township, all these different zoning, so, you know, we can't. It would be nice if we made it all that, everything agriculture, everything residential. We don't have that ability to do that.
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand limitations on that. Okay.
Dan, I appreciate your comments. I understand your concern and sympathetic to it, but we'll have to talk through our attorney and the zoning officer.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, it was important to me to, to voice the concern affected you, so I thank you for that.
Everything you have said this evening has been recorded?
With audio and video.
So your comments have been appropriately taken. Uh, let's see, any other public comments?
Well, I, I don't know if this merits public comment, but a landowner in Franklin Township reached out to me and asked if we are fundamentally opposed to a solar farm being in our township. And I said, I don't think so, but I should, I need to ask the person before, because they were, they were reached out to, and they don't want to go to a lot of trouble if they think it's just gonna be something that, I don't know, on what grounds we would say no to. So Joan and I talked a little bit with John, and you were gonna look into the zoning and what.
There is no zoning now that, that covers.
That covers it, so.
Solar panels.
They are permitted on a smaller basis. We have fifteen or sixteen of these solar installations, not as large as what you're proposing, but these are basically rooftop ones or backyard.
Yeah, this is different.
This house, and there's, and there's one, and there's one winter.
I, I talked to Jeff Bogels, and he said if it's a solar farm that someone is producing electricity for sale, he said I would consider that a commercial business, so it would have to be addressed that way. Now, if it's.
So we need a special use?
You would need to determine which zoning district it could be permitted in.
Whereas if you just had a panel on your roof for your own house, you're not.
That's a, that's a typical accessory use, like a swimming pool or something of that nature.
Or he said also, if, say, a farmer said, I want to put in, you know, a fair amount of panels to run my farm, so I, I, you know, I don't have to buy electricity. That's for his use, so that's fine. But when you're, when you put the panels in to sell the electricity, then it becomes commercial.
So then do I, what advice do I give them? Is it that they need, they would need a conditional use?
It depends where they want it.
They need to talk to the zoning officer about a potential place to put it.
Where they want to put it, what the zoning is in that area.
It's, we've talked about it.
Okay, but the best thing would be if they could call Jeff Bogels tomorrow and talk to him.
Okay.
Talk to him. Typically, when somebody comes in with something like that, they'll bring a sketch or a plan or something.
Yeah, I think they haven't gotten to that point yet. They just didn't want to hear no, they got go.
Well.
Or if it is gonna be no, they don't want to waste the time.
The right thing would be a phone call, as Joan suggested. If that's promising, then they could come up and talk to Jeff directly. And then the next step would be to come to the board and just make some informal proposal. That's the way they've done it before.
So I'll send it to you and to Jeff tomorrow.
Okay.
If it goes a step further and the zoning is turned, can be managed, then they would come to the P C with a sketch plan, which is an informal proposal to the P C. And no one in that case is committed to a time clock, so the sketch plan works out well for both the proposer and the P C, because they get a chance to work out the major issues without getting one clock of a ninety-day approve or disapprove. So that's kind of the general process, so I think what Joan said would be the right first step.
Okay, thank you.
We've got a bunch of them in the township, so. My only objection to them.
We have, we have a bunch of them that are just for.
Yeah, they're small. The rooftop.
No, they're using it for commercial.
No, no, they're using it, they, they're all used on the property. My final objection is that, you know, is that they don't reflect in somebody's property, you know, that a light doesn't reflect in somebody's property, or or it's generally the large part of it's visible from the road. But we actually agree that that has to be determined when it comes to this in the. Can we cover it?
Yeah, just one quick comment. I think it was Donna, Joan, Jeff, and I went to the park. Did you ever think October last year? And I'm just kind of curious as to, A, what projects, I haven't really followed up more recently on what projects that we're gonna do in twenty nineteen at the park. Any budget and timing for twenty nineteen?
We talked about bathrooms.
Yeah, two of the projects are pretty good, the bathrooms. What, what we're running into a little bit of a problem is trying to figure out what to put on the floor that will withstand the wear and tear and the abuse. You know, we talked about tile, but I'm afraid what gets put into that grout, it gets nasty sometimes.
You also talked about the stuff.
Yeah, but we're trying to find how to do it.
You could put epoxy paint on there and just paint it every year. Wash it up and paint it every, that probably wouldn't be a reason.
That probably will be the best, the best thing to do.
Yeah, because you just restore it with fairly low cost.
But that's, that's gonna be our first project this year.
Anything else, I know we talked about the grills.
You have the grills. A boy scout is working with Jeff to come up with how he wants to do the, the area around, you know, when they down, put in some mop havers or something.
And the things like the healing garden or whatever it's called, and the mulch on top of the, or to redo the mulch, or take it over.
The top lot.
Yeah.
The top lot's the big issue. That's fifteen grand to.
We're doing that this year.
I, I, we're not gonna have money to do it this year for the winters. We're gonna do that next year.
Is it gonna, are my kids gonna be all right?
Yeah.
I wouldn't put any money in order not plants in that stuff till you do this top lot.
Yeah.
So if they do the bathrooms and.
Tennis courts need some issues. We look at those over the years as some.
Like they crack them a little?
Yeah.
That's, that could be a year or two before we fix that.
Yeah, because you can use it. I'm with you. I'd rather.
Well, we can have it. We can set up a meeting and talk about these in detail, give the staff a chance to develop a program and put it on an agenda.
Well, we actually did this. We just have to bring it back.
Right.
Well, Jeff was trying to get a price on the bathrooms.
Right.
Yeah, we heard from Tinder, right?
The floor is the sticking point, right?
Yeah.
Kind of the apostle.
Well, we might have to just buy the epoxy paint and make the.
Because I hate the looseest season, you know.
Right. Oh, no, we're gonna do bathrooms this year, because we had, we had, the park loan was paid off.
Right.
We got that fifty-six thousand dollar plus on a budget. We put forty thousand into the open space, and the rest was supposed to go into a capital improvements on the park.
Right, so we are doing bathrooms this year.
We, we plan on it, yeah.
We also have the tower that we get money for.
Well, that goes into the general fund. The salt tower.
Was that a decision that was made? Didn't it used to go to the park, or it never went to the park?
Yeah, we did it one time, but.
One time it was in the park fund, but it didn't make any sense to me.
Seven years it's been coming to the general fund.
But we're looking for money in the towers in the park. That might make sense.
Well, you take it out of the general fund, then where do you make that up?
Well, I mean, we do run a surplus in the general fund, and it seems like if we're gonna have the park, we should probably fund it somehow.
No, I think we, I think we should bring it back, because we do have money to put us up.
With, with the park income, we will have, have money and as.
It's gonna be bad.
Within each year as we progress, but the, the top lot is such a big expense. If we did that, that's our extra money this year. You know, other than all the maintenance, we do normally like taking care of the fields and everything else. So that, that would, we wouldn't be able to do the bathrooms if we did that, so we thought the bathrooms were a higher priority, so.
Assuming, you said the top was still, nobody's in danger.
No, it, it just needs to be gone, right.
So how does the bathrooms work? Do we gotta remember?
I don't know. I have all that stuff in a thick pack at my desk. We were doing the road periphery, trying to get that.
Oh, I know that. Yeah.
But it would be new fixtures.
New fixtures, new lighting.
New lighting, yeah, and, and so.
It needs it. It really needs it. Well, you remember, yeah, it was pretty bad.
They're pretty.
And John thinks it's pretty bad. Yeah, as good as time.
I live in a bachelor pad.
It was pretty bad.
We'll, we'll work, we'll work on trying to get some plans.
If Donna and I, you know, if we can really help out with that and bring, bring the team back together or the band back together.
Yeah. I have all the presses. Yeah. I have all the presses that you gave back a little bit.
Okay.
Good stuff. I was gonna bring it up at the next step, but we'll, we'll keep it up.
Okay. See one, uh, yeah, just a little quick summary of the meeting that Joan and I attended with the Cheshire County Land Commission today on the, um, vision, um.
Partnership program.
Partnership program. They went over the, you've got a copy of the, um, of the program and it's very detailed. Explains exactly what the requirements are to get the grant money. And there's an application form in there and the application form will be done online. So there's a whole bunch, there's a whole list of things in there that it will cover and it won't cover. Programs, the grant has to be submitted to June twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth or twenty.
Some, some are in there, but I'm talking to, um, Susan Alex afterwards. We're not ready for that. So there's a second round in September or October. So that's likely where we would apply. So. The key issue, we talked about before, is to determine our compliance or non-compliance to high density housing. Depending on the outcome of that, that'll tell us whether we're gonna do an individual comprehensive plan or we do a multi-municipal one with another adjoining municipality.
But she, she agreed that we need to address the, of the fair share analysis and look at our zoning first.
That's, that's, that's the, that's the high density housing issue. The other is the SU district issues. And also there's some low density housing issues. Uh, anyway, we need a clear path to some revenue for those items before we engage the, uh, comprehensive plans. And we may have to buy some, like, technical services from them straight out without a grant, so.
And she said she would, um, basing it off of Mark's memo, she's, she's going to send us a, um, like a commitment letter. She said that's the best way to, to do that part of it.
So we'll sign sometime and contract with them to finish this book, so. Um, when they're ready, they'll let us know. Okay. And that information has been distributed. I don't think anything else significant.
No, just that, she told us we do not have to worry about the grant this go around because we're, we're.
Too far.
Technical services is what we're going after this time.
Yeah, and then we picked up a, a summary sheet of the landscapes three. I tried to get another full copy of it. It cost twenty-five dollars.
That's right.
But it's online. It's on, we can get it online, but somewhere I gave mine to somebody and I should have done that. So if I need another one, they could pay twenty-five dollars, so.
We can print them out.
Well, let me see. This, this one is fine. The summary is all the key points and compliances. The only other comment I'd say is that the, the grant really commits you to, uh, follow landscapes three, which I think you probably would end up ending with. Because they'll come to your meetings if you don't engage them. But you're definitely locking yourself into landscapes three in a very heavy way and I don't think that's bad. I'm just, just a point. Okay. Alright, here, with that, hearing that, I think the meeting is adjourned at eight thirty-five. Is there a landscape one and two?